Take a seat before we start, but I appreciate you waiting patiently. Want to call the, want to actually adjourn the special meeting of the city council at 6:06 and want to call the regular sitting of the, regular meeting of the city council to order at 6:06 PM.
Mayor, before we proceed to the regular meeting of the city council, I was just going to add, we have a start time for the parking authority at 6:00 PM tonight.
All right, let's amend that. Want to call to order the parking authority of the city of Elk Grove, regular meeting on Wednesday, July the 11th at 6:06 PM. And Mr. Secretary, could you roll call, please?
For that roll call, I'll just say in the formation documents of the parking authority, the city council sits as the board of directors for the parking authority of the city of Elk Grove, and I'll note that all members for the visual roll call are present for the authority, and I wanted to note that there's no additional compensation or stipend to the city council members for their service on the parking authority. That would take us on to just the general public comment under section two, but I don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak on general public comment matters for the parking authority. Looking for going once, that would take us on to just our section three presentations for the parking authority, that's item 3.1, the annual update on the parking authority. I'll hand it over to Brad.
Good evening, Parking Authority Board. The Parking Authority of the city of Elk Grove was formed in 2005. The authority was formed to participate in the development and operation of park and ride lots for public transportation and other parking facilities, including a location in the Civic Center area. The authority's bylaws state that the board of directors shall hold one regular meeting in July. The Parking Authority had no, had no activity or financial transactions during fiscal year 2017, 18, and there is nothing to report.
Excellent. At this point, I want to open up for public comment. I see that no members of the public signed up to speak, I'm going to close public comment. And item four, adjournment of the regular meeting of the Parking Authority at 6:08 PM. This point, I want to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting on Wednesday, July the 11th at 6:08 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, July 13th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, July 15th at 6:00 PM. This being closed captioned, it will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card which can be found at the back of the room and provided to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of that item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, if you could call, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And 1.2 is a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite the general manager of the water district, who is joining us tonight, to leave some pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I consider this an honor. Please rise and face the flag, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the city council would like to invite the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of agenda.
Should I move?
Got a motion. Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. Next item.
Under section three, our closed session, we have no items, which will take us directly to section four, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, the new hire introductions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're going to be presenting our new hires for the last quarter, which is April 1 through June 30. We're adding a new twist to the, this presentation, we're going to be presenting people that were promoted within the last quarter as well, and we hope to do that on an ongoing basis. So, we're going to go ahead and start with Chief Noblet in the Police Department.
Come on down. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It's always a pleasure to be able to present our newest employees to you, and I do appreciate the, the added twist tonight, be able to present to the folks that have been promoted over the last quarter. So, I've got quite a few here behind me, as you can see, tonight. I'm going to start with, maybe I'll just have the person kind of raise your hand so they know who we're talking about. Andrew Sharma, our newest community service officer. There's Andrew behind me. Andrew started with us on April the 15th of this year. He previously worked with the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Department as a deputy, and then later as an animal service officer, and then we've hired him here as a community service officer, and we're very happy to have Andrew. Next up is Elvia Trujillo. Where's Elvia? There she is. Elvia also started on the 15th of April, and she started her law enforcement career as a police aide in Scottsdale, Arizona, and then ultimately came back to our area where she went back to school, earned a master's degree in justice studies from Cal State San Jose. She then went to work for the Sunnyvale Police Department as a community services officer in 2013, and while there, she held a lot of great jobs. She was a training officer, a crisis intervention stress management team member, police activities board member, so as you might imagine, we're very fortunate and happy to have Elvia as part of our team. Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Ing. Where's Jennifer? There she is. Jennifer started with us also on April the 15th of this year. Some of you might know Jennifer. She and her husband ran a local business for a number of years, dry cleaning business, and rather than retire, Jen decided that she didn't, wasn't quite ready for that and wanted to continue her service, and she has since been hired as our police equipment technician. So, Jennifer handles all of the equipment issue that the officers get, which is a bigger job than it sounds. It's quite a lot, and Jennifer's doing a great job, and we're happy to have her as well. We welcome her to the team. Next up is Police Officer Patrick DePrado. There he is. Patrick started with us also on April the 15th, and he was hired as a police officer initially with the Napa State Hospital Police back in 2012, and he worked his way up there and did a bunch of jobs, including detective. So, ultimately, we, he went to the police academy here, we hired him on, and he's been a police officer, like I said, with us since April the 15th, and we're happy to welcome Patrick to the team as well. Next up, pardon me while I fumble through my voluminous notes, Keegan Henry. Where's Keegan? There he is. Keegan started with us on May the 14th, and Keegan holds a bachelor's degree in computer science from Sac State. He has joined our team as an information technology analyst, so he's working on our IT team, which, as we all know, is very important to us as we roll out our services in the community, so we're happy to have Keegan as well. Next up, new police officer Milton Pham. There's Milton. So, Milton graduated from the police academy just last week, and so we're happy to have Milton aboard. He's in his, are you field training now? Did you start that yet?
Next week.
Next week. Next week, he starts with his field training, so that's where, that's where it gets real for, for Milton. But Milton comes as a graduate of Laguna Creek High School locally here, went to UC Davis, earned a bachelor's, got an interesting past. I hope you don't mind me sharing a little bit of this, Milton. I told him I wouldn't embarrass him, but it's impressive. UC Davis earned a bachelor's degree in biological science with an emphasis on neurology, physiology, and behavior. Prior to joining our crew here, he had a career in phase one cancer research, and then decided to go to the police academy, and now he's one of our newest officers, so we're happy to have Milton on, on the team as well. His hire date was June the 25th. Let's see, who else do we have? Where's Justin? Justin Brazil. There he is, on the end. Justin is, we've hired Justin as a police recruit, so Justin will be starting the police academy in August. So, we'll be sponsoring Justin through the academy, starts in August, it's a long road, it ends in January, and once they graduate in January, my intent would be to bring them back and, and celebrate the fact that they've graduated from the police academy. Justin's, Justin's got an interesting background as well, he's been, he's been a teacher, has a degree in kinesiology from Sac State, so we're happy to have Justin on the team as well. Nate Stevenson. Nate's right behind me. There he is. Nate is going to be accompanying Justin to the police academy. Nate's also Elk Grove, Elk Grove High School graduate, also has a bachelor's degree in kinesiology, and we're happy to have Nate on the team as well. So, they'll have company in the academy, they'll be able to assist each other. Let's see, that gets me through the new hires. Now, I want to jump into the promotions. I'm going to start with, with our newest lieutenant, Ryan Elmore. Where, there's Ryan over there. Also, they see the bosses stand on the side of the room, I see how it is. So, Ryan's been with us since the beginning, since the department was formed in 2006. He's got 21 years of law enforcement experience. He spent part of that time at Sacramento Police Department. He's got an extensive background in working narcotics. Most recently, he was a detective supervisor, and he's just been promoted to lieutenant, so we're very, very proud of Ryan and thankful that he's taken on a higher level of responsibility in our organization. Next to Ryan there is Carlos Vina. Carlos is one of our newest sergeants. Carlos has 14 years of experience, worked previously for the Stockton Police Department, then the city of Oceanside Police Department, and then, of course, with us, he was a detective prior to being promoted to sergeant just a few weeks back. And then next to Carlos is our, our newest sergeant, Sergeant Will Hancock. Will's been with us since the beginning, also, he's got 20 years of experience. He worked for Davis Police Department before he came here, he's had a variety of jobs in our organization, very well respected, and we're happy to have him as a supervisor on our team. Congratulations. And then, next up here, let me find my place, pardon me, Misty Johnson. Where's Misty? There's Misty. So, Misty is, she graduated from the police academy with Officer Pham last week, and you might recognize Misty. Misty's been an animal control officer with our department for quite some time, and while working full-time here, she put herself through the police academy, graduated from the academy, got through our hiring and background process, and stands before you today as one of our newest police officers. And last, but certainly not least, we have Madison O'Connor here on the end. You may recognize Madison as well. Madison has been a community service officer for our department for a couple of years, and she too will be going to the police academy with Nate and Justin. So, that's the new hires and the promotees, and again, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate being able to do that.
Chief, is this new with sponsorship of cadets going through the academy?
It's relatively new. I mean, we've, we've had a couple of recruits that we've sponsored, we've just found, frankly, the job market is, is tight, and in order to, to reach the, you know, the diverse qualified pool that we want to reach, that we've, we've taken to sponsoring through the academy, we're trying to take a mixed approach to hiring that involves doing that, hiring lateral officers where we can, and then certainly some of the entry-level officers as well.
Excellent, good to see that.
Thank you.
Welcome, all of you, and congratulations. Welcome.
I think our attorney's office is next. John, you want to bring up all your staff?
All of them.
Bring it up all my staff. That's a tough act to follow.
So, it's a similar theme, though, law enforcement lawyers. You've all met her already. This is our new deputy city attorney, Chelsea Easton. We're very happy to have Chelsea here with us as our deputy city attorney. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration with an emphasis in accounting from Cal Poly from 2012, 2012. She got her law degree from McGeorge in 2015, where she was seventh in her class, not seven percent, seventh in her class, out of 172 candidates. She wrote and edited on the school's law review. She externed for a federal bankruptcy judge, McManus, and during law school, she clerked with us a little bit, on and off, and while studying for the bar. After she graduated, she left us and went to the top-flight law firm of Bhutan Jones here in Sacramento. After a couple of years of them training her a little bit, we hired her back. In 2018, she's been with us since April 16th of this year, and we're very happy to have her.
Welcome, Chelsea.
Welcome.
Brad Kane, next, for our finance administrative services department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce to you Lauren Myers. She is a new customer service specialist for the city, and when I say new, as in June 25th, so very new. Lauren comes to the city with two degrees from Consumnis River College, where she obtained a degree in anatomy and physiology with emphasis in microbiology, and the second degree in math and science. Lauren and her husband Andrew have made their home here in Elk Grove, and in their spare time enjoy whitewater rafting and cooking, but really, Lauren has quickly proved to be an asset in the finance department and her sharp customer service skills, and we are very happy to have Lauren as part of our team. So, thank you, Lauren. Also, though she was not able to attend tonight, I'd also like to let the community know that Trina McKenzie has joined the city, and she's in the position of a senior business analyst in the city's IT department. Trina has over 15 years' experience as a business system analyst and an IT project manager with both public and private sectors. She has worked with Yahoo, Department of Defense, State of California, and VSP, as well as worked as a consultant in, for various clients and industries. Trina is a Bay Area native and has made her home in Elk Grove since 2012. Her specialties include process analysis and improvement, application development and delivery, and a particular helpful skill that fits well with the application development on her resume is her ability to elicit and learn from a user what the user would like an application to do for them, and develop that application with the end result in mind, along with the documentation requirements and application analysis. So, we're also very pleased to have Trina join the team, and are already experiencing the results of her work, so thank you.
Welcome, Lauren and Trina.
Next is Darren Wilson, Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Alicia Tut cannot be here tonight, she's on a pre-planned vacation before she was hired. What I'd like to do is bring her back next quarter during these introductions, but I would like to introduce the position that started June 18th, that's the Housing Administrative Analyst One. Much needed help for Sarah Bontrager in the Housing Division of Development Services, so we look forward to introducing Alicia in October.
Finally, Bob Murdock, Public Works.
Mayor, council members, pleased to let you know that Raquel Chavaria, who's been with the city actually 11 years, was recently promoted to Senior Transit Planner. Unfortunately, she had a previous commitment and couldn't make it this evening, but appreciate the opportunity to recognize her hard work and resulted in a recent promotion. Thank you.
That's it. Okay.
Like the new format. Very good. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Jason. I know you and I have talked about that, and I think this is one of those opportunities in which we can, you know, highlight the new hires, and not only that, but folks who are promoting within our agency, so thank you very much for bringing it forward.
All right, next item.
Take us to section five, public comment.
And we have one speaker sign up to speak, Mr. Mark Graham.
And just to note that Mr. Graham did present a, according to the city policy, submitted a PowerPoint presentation to accompany his comments this evening, which he submitted in according, in accordance with the city guidelines.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove, you know that by now, and I would like to meet with Mr. Berman, or whoever is the right person on behalf of the council to discuss this, because we could have a more productive conversation in person than by email, which is what it's been so far. With all due respect, the council continues to have its head in the sand regarding the AT&amp;T agreement on cell antennas in the public right-of-way, and I mean that in the nicest possible way, and basically what I mean is that an agreement is being negotiated, and you have had no input yet. I sent you an email this afternoon, I'm recommending that the city contract with a consulting firm that has advised over 1,000 communities in 40 different states that have been facing this exact type of issue. Telecommunications law is complicated, both state and federal, and there are state and federal court cases you have to know. The attorneys for AT&amp;T and Verizon know this stuff like the back of their hand, they do this every day for their job, and it's just too complicated, and if the, if the city basically goes in, you know, without adequate preparation, we could end up with a bad agreement. So, and the excerpt, I sent you an excerpt from their overview of this company, and one of the nicest things about it is that they provide their services at no cost to the city, and that's because they worked it out so that it's paid by the applicant. In this case, that's AT&amp;T. I also sent you an excerpt from the Planning Commission Staff, Petaluma Planning Commission Staff Report dated June 12th, and I'm just, I'm not going to read it, but I'm going to give this to staff for, to include in the minutes. There are seven bullet points in terms of their proposed amendment to their municipal code, and the first six of them are all good ideas, and I recommend the city, this city could use the exact same bullet points, just throw out the seventh one, because it's too, allows them to be too close. This photograph is what has happened when cities have allowed telecommunications companies to have their way and install these so-called cell, they call them small cells, but they're cell antennas. There was an agreement, Mr. Murdock, you were sent this agreement by AT&amp;T.
I don't see anything on our monitors up here.
Well, that's too bad. Oh, there it is. Okay.
All of our monitors are black.
Yes, perhaps the monitors could be adjusted so that you can see it. Perhaps I could have the additional time that I'm losing because of this. Okay. Do you see it now? No.
No.
Council's, council's experiencing technical difficulties.
It's AT&amp;T.
Yes. That much is true.
There you go. Excellent.
Now you see it. Let me start with, this is what it looks like. You've seen this before, I believe. The way it's headed, Mr. Hobbs is negotiating an agreement with AT&amp;T, and he has to guess and assume what the council wants because you haven't told him what you want, and I think what's going to happen is, he'll come up with an agreement that he's hammered out with AT&amp;T, present it to you, it'll be on the agenda, and you'll look at it and say, no. You'll either say, we don't want an agreement on this because it's not necessary, or we don't want this agreement, and at that point, I predict, the council will start, kind of go back to square one and do these things, which I think the council should do now, decide whether it wants an agreement on this issue with AT&amp;T, and assuming it does, want an agreement, what should the goals be? Is the current permitting process in the municipal code, Title 23, Chapter 94, sufficient? Should the public right-of-way be used for data services or just for telecommunications services, or both? At that point, I believe the council is going to, I predict, you're going to hold a public meeting to solicit and receive community input on this issue, and receive a staff report, and have a discussion, and then based on all that, I think the city is going to, the council is going to advise the city attorney, okay, now, go back to AT&amp;T and tell them this is what we want and this is what we don't want. And my point is, if the council is going to do all that down the road, why not do it now? Just please hire, contract with that consulting firm that I emailed you this afternoon, and the city will be much better prepared to end up with a good agreement that protects the rights and interests of the city and the residents. Thank you. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council, you?
City Attorney, do you know when the agreement and the amendment might make it to council?
We don't have a date yet. We have been working with the zoning application, or the zoning amendment with AT&amp;T. We were looking at trying to get to the Planning Commission in August or September, which would mean it would come to the council in roughly October, maybe November, but those dates have not been firmed up yet. It's, it's coming soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hobbs, you and I had a conversation subsequent to an email that I received from Mr. Graham. Now, I don't remember the particulars of what is within our powers and what is not. Do you recall the specifics to that? And if not, that's fine. What I was going to suggest is, perhaps Mr. Graham could sit down with you, and you can go with that with him, so that he has accurate information.
So, I've, I've traded emails with Mr. Graham, we've had a lot of communication on this topic. I understand his concerns, they're fair concerns. Some of the issues that come to light on these is what can the city do with respect to aesthetics. Some of the things that were seen in the photos, I don't think anyone in this room wants to have that. You're not going to see anything like that. One of the components in the agreement would include photo depictions of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and the city, the city council will get to sign off on that. One of the other concerns is location with respect to things like electromagnetic fields, EMFs is what they call them. What Congress has done with that is they have said that cities cannot regulate with respect to EMF transmissions, that's all preempted by federal law, so long as the carrier complies with FCC regulations. We'll have all of those types of conditions in there. What AT&amp;T is ultimately seeking is a process where they can have their equipment sort of pre-approved by the city council through an agreement which would dovetail with the zoning code. So, there's a much discussion about why we have an agreement and why do we do an agreement as opposed to the zoning code. They're intertwined, as AT&amp;T has proposed it. As a land use applicant, they're entitled to apply, they pay for that application process, they pay for staff time, and the normal process is we eventually bring it to the Planning Commission and then the city council. And if the city council is dissatisfied with what it is, they can change it, you can modify it, you can approve it, you have lots of discretion at that point. So, that's the normal process, how this would play out. I'm not sure if I answered your question, Mayor, I know I went on a little bit, on a tangent there, but if I didn't, please let me know.
You know, it's, to me, it makes sense. There are certain things that we can do and we can't do, and this is part of the process. I'm just trying to help Mr. Graham out, because he obviously has, has written to all of my colleagues up here on a regular basis. I don't want it to, to be that, that email or that letter that is ignored. I want to try to help him figure out when is it appropriate time to chime in on this, and whether he needs to wait until it comes to council, or this is a conversation that needs to be taken offline with either you or the acting city manager in regards to his suggestion of contracting with whatever entity it was, I can't seem to recall his brief mention of it.
I haven't seen the entity, I haven't seen the email that he's talking about, I think it may have come in late this afternoon, and it just hasn't gone to me. We'll do whatever the council directs, that's fine, but I will tell you that Mr. Graham and the Development Services Director have sat down with, have sat down together and talked about the process and talked about these issues already. A lot of this stuff are matters that have been covered with, with Mr. Graham, but again, we'll, we'll follow the direction of the council, whatever you like.
So, I see, I see him shaking his head no, so maybe there's some loose ends. Perhaps can we make an attempt? Because I, we're, you know, I'm seeing it over and over again, that he consistently sends us email, and I, my, my feeling is, a lot of it's very technical that can be addressed by staff.
Sure, if that's the will of the council, we can do that.
Yeah, that would be helpful, I mean, at least for me, and for the other members, yeah, I'm not sure, but yeah, that would be helpful for me.
Darren, have you met on this?
Yes, Antonio and I met with Mr. Graham, I would say several months ago, regarding the process of this.
So, I've been emailing and speaking by phone with Mr. Graham and also with the city attorney, and, you know, part of this, I think, is a procedural issue of just kind of how the bureaucratic process works, and the problem is, is I don't know what I don't know, and so rather than direct staff on a subject matter of which I don't know the full pros and cons related to it, that's why I think to have it go ahead and play out, and staff gets sort of to the core of the issue, and then comes forward and says, is this acceptable to council? That's how I saw the, the process, and that's what I relayed to Mr. Graham, is that until or unless somebody has a specific ask, I don't have a specific response.
Yeah, Mayor, so similarly, I've exchanged emails with Mr. Graham as well, and it doesn't appear we have an agreement on the process, but what I'm hearing Mr. Graham from his presentation and what I'm garnering from the emails, Mr. Graham, is you want to have this conversation now, you want the council to decide now whether it wants to enter into agreement, and what I, like I said in my email, right now, staff is, is, they're, they're researching a lot of the, the technical information to figure out whether it's, it's, it's in, it is worthy of a, of the city doing that, and then bringing it to us for a decision where we would take input from yourself and others in the public. That is, that is the process. I think, I would agree with Councilman Hume, I think it's premature for us to weigh in on something before we've had the facts, before our staff's been able to vet out the technical aspects and the legal aspects, and, but I do encourage you to, you know, voice your opinion, but I think when we, when we have a staff report, I think that is the prudent time to actually, for you to weigh in again, and for the public to weigh in some more, and then for staff to deliberate.
And I'm fine with that, I just want Mr. Graham to understand that, you know, this obviously is premature, and, you know, I, I want you to feel that we're listening and we're trying to find answers for you, but at the same time, I think my colleagues are right in that this is a process, and you have to allow the opportunity for staff to, to investigate and develop a staff report so that you would appropriately, you can properly object and, and present your case at that time.
And Mr. Graham, I haven't responded to all your emails. Early on, I responded to them all, and then when I got you engaged with staff, I have been taking all of your emails, reading them, forwarding them to the city attorney and to the city clerk so that it could be included in the record as part of the evaluation, and they'll, they'll have an opportunity over the next few days to evaluate your most recent emails from this afternoon to see if that consulting firm you mentioned may be something that we want to entertain.
Okay. So, you know, obviously, this is very important. I don't want members of the public to see this and make the assumption that we're not being responsive to you or staff is not listening to you. We are, but, you know, like everything else, there is a step-by-step process, and we'll get there. And, you know, I assure you of that. But, you know, certainly between you and I, if you have any additional questions or anything, I'll try my best to answer. If I don't know the answer, I'll kick it to staff, and we'll go from there. So, thank you very much. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public signed up to speak, I want to close public comment and move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Several items to review with the council. One is just a brief after-action report on Illegal Fireworks Task Force that was convened this year. As council knows, there's a lot of activity, a lot of illegal fireworks going on, not only in the city of Elk Grove, but throughout the entire region and the state. In Elk Grove, there were 200—the task force responded to over 200 incidents, seized over 225 pounds of illegal fireworks, issued citations amounting to over $15,000, and made one felony arrest. So, the task force is going to continue to work and look for ways to continue to depress this issue and deter and prevent as much of this activity as we can, but it is a pretty monumental issue right now across the state.
Jason, whether you or the chief, what was—Elk Grove was not unique. And was there an increase, not only in Elk Grove, but statewide and region-wide on the illegal fireworks?
Go ahead and take that, Chief.
I can speak to that a little bit. Regionally, I would say absolutely yes. In fact, just last Friday, I had a meeting with my peer chiefs throughout the region, and I can tell you that every city experienced the same phenomenon that we did. I can't speak to it at the state level, but it's a safe bet that there is a sharp increase. It's frankly—if what we're hearing is, it's just increasingly easy to run over to Nevada and buy fireworks or various other states that sell them, and bring them home and store them for the holiday. It's certainly an issue that we're all facing. Everybody's grappling with the same issue.
Are you finding this mostly individuals or—that are doing it for personal use, or they buy in large quantities to resell?
I think there's a little bit of both. There's certainly a market for it, probably, you know, through various websites, I'm told. But I think most of it is individuals buying and using, you know, what they purchase for themselves. But I'm certain there are some that are making a profit from it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And next item is the announcement of a launch of the South County Small Business Development Center here at Elk Grove City Hall. The city's Economic Development Department and the Sacramento Metro Chamber partnered to establish South Sacramento County Small Business Development Center. It's scheduled to open this week. It'll be open on Wednesdays, and it's an opportunity to provide entrepreneurs and business owners with free professional business planning and financial consulting. Bow Street Apartments is currently under construction. It's a 98-unit affordable housing apartment complex on Aubrey Drive, projected to open in September. Rents will range from $385 to $1183 a month, depending on income level. The leasing process has begun, and interested applicants can call 916-347-7016 to register for the lottery. Lottery registration will close on July 20th. Another announcement, the city is joining the Alliance for Innovation that I mentioned at the last meeting. It's an organization focused on connecting local agencies with emerging practices and helping to build a culture of innovation within local government. So, over the next several weeks, city staff will be working with the alliance to establish goals for the membership and begin rolling out available programs across the organization. Several different roadway projects are getting underway, and I wanted you to be aware of, with some road closures. The first is the extension of Big Horn Boulevard. It's going to close Poppy Ridge Road at Big Horn Boulevard beginning today, and it'll remain closed through December. The project is scheduled for completion in the spring. The other project is Laguna Boulevard extension—extending the left turn lanes on Laguna Park Drive and Franklin Boulevard. That's scheduled to begin on Monday, July 16th. This project will include a combination of daywork and nightwork between 9:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and completion is expected at the end of August. Detour signs, electronic message boards will be in place at both locations. Just a brief update as well on our open counter that we unveiled to you last February. We've had a great success with that launch. Through—from February to now, we've had over 9,300 site visits, 2,650 completed projects. Those people are going through the entire system. And what it does is it's a simple user interface that provides businesses and developers with a comprehensive report on project zoning, required permits, and fee estimates. It's convenient for customers and internally efficient. We estimate that the platform has saved an estimated 443 staff hours since its launch. Another thing related to Development Services Permit Simplicity, that project is expanding. The council may remember previously, in 2015, Development Services Department began—sorry, Development Services Department will begin expanding the use of this program that was originally lost in 2015. The changes will allow for an increase in the number of design professionals eligible to submit Permit Simplicity projects and broaden the scope of projects eligible to use this program. And just a final note, SWAC uses on the rise. We had a very successful 2017, 2018, 27 percent increase over the prior year. It's a total of 21,000 customers using that facility in the last fiscal year. A majority of that increase is due to electronic waste disposal. So, there are a few minor updates on the citywide initiatives. I prefer the council, as well as members of the public, to the website where we provide those updates on a regular basis. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? There are no questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next item is reports and featured items. Let's start with Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned last meeting that it was coming up on the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Annual Meeting where we approved the budget. So, we passed the budget for 2018-19, and the city of Elk Grove's allocation that was approved for the 2017-18, it was just under $1.3 million. So, I don't know if we've received the check yet, but the check should be in the mail, so to speak. We also did the appointment of the chair and vice chair. I was appointed as the chair, and Matt Hedges is the vice chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Kudos to Kristen and Jody and all the city team that helped out with the Fourth of July, another spectacular event. It's great to have the kickoff that we had, that the majority of the council was there, and then to see everybody there with, you know, family, friends, and wrapped it up with some fantastic fireworks. And even saw the—Jason, our interim city manager there. It's great to see so many of the team members there. And then, the rest, I've been pretty busy on a lot of personal time with vacations, and it's that time of year, and enjoying this beautiful weather. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I—for the last two and a half weeks, I've actually been spending a lot of time with the family. My aunt passed away. She was the vice principal for Monterey Trails High School, and also the family-owned East West Cafe, which is right behind us here. She died at the age of 45 to cancer and leaves behind three young children, so spending a lot of time with the family. Didn't get a chance to attend a lot of the events that happen here in our city. However, I do want to talk a little bit about a project that encompasses—or in partnership with Paratransit, which Councilmember Hume and I serve on the board. And also, it started with Secog's inaugural civic lab, which the vice mayor sits on the board, where Paratransit and North State Building Industry Foundation is now working with the Elk Grove Unified School District. And I'm big on youth and job, and we're looking at transportation issues here in our city. And so, this new program, this pilot program that is starting here in our own city is called Moving Youth to Jobs. And I would like to have the CEO of Paratransit come and maybe present to the council about the program. It talks a lot about training young folks in our city here, not just about transportation, but also connecting them to jobs here in our city. So, if I can get the council to maybe—
I support that.
Absolutely.
Yep.
That's all there is. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I have very little to report, because all of my regional boards and commissions were on recess or had canceled meetings. And I apologize, I was not able to come out for the salute to the red, white, and blue. I was out of town for that long weekend on a road trip with my wife and extended family, the highlight of which was a rafting trip down the Colorado from Moab, Utah to the top of Lake Powell. And I just have to say, it was an amazing fireworks show of a different kind to be in a quarter-mile-deep canyon, seeing bighorn sheep, and spending the night on the side of the river, and being able to see the Milky Way and all the stars, and experience a little bit of our great national park system. So, highly recommended if you're ever in that part of the world. That's it.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds like a great time, Councilman Hume. Our condolences, Councilwoman Hume, for your loss. I'll also the opportunity to go to the red, white, and blue, and extend my kudos to Jody and Kristen and the staff as well. I'm glad that, Chief, you're going to be working with the fire chief to—on those illegal fireworks. Obviously, the up-to penalty didn't work. Maybe we need to talk about a minimum, and obviously, more resources, given that all our officers are helping out at the red, white, and blue. Went to the—one of the community ambassador programs, so I just want to commend the chief for that program as well. Think there were about—I want to say 25 people here that day. It was really neat to see folks who are really interested in learning more about the city and volunteering for the police department. And then, just real quick note on the—for traffic. So, I was driving down Laguna Boulevard when—I think it was a Friday, and kept getting stuck at signals. And I said, "What's going on here?" Because we just completed our fourth phase of our intelligent transportation system, which linked all the signals together to try to move traffic along. So, I was able to talk with our Public Works Director, Rob Murdock, and Ryan Chapman, and we figured out, well, there were some preemptions that occurred, and I noticed, you know, whether—I think one was an ambulance, and one was a fire, and one was a police, all different times, and a pedestrian. I think a pedestrian came along as well. So, my point is just for folks to know that the signal timing is better, but if you experience things like that, when you have a preemption or a pedestrian that hits the crosswalk button, it throws that timing off, and so, it takes a few cycles for it to get back in sync. So, Bob, maybe we could post something on our website just to inform folks how that works and how it can be affected like that. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you.
Excellent. Had an opportunity to participate in a local business networking that's led by some business leaders in the community at the Logan Roadhouse called The Side Hustle. Had an opportunity to attend Jerry Grunwald's memorial, which I saw a number of the team from the city attend, and, you know, hearing the story of his life was very moving. It certainly was very special, and what's sad to see that, you know, he had to leave so soon. And, of course, that brings to mind, you know, Councilmember Hume, and your loss. I have enjoyed wonderful food at that particular restaurant, and I know your auntie, and my heart breaks to know that you have to go through this and your whole family, so my deep condolences, and let me know when the service is. In addition to that, had a chance to sit down with Go Green Foundation, who was visiting here in our city. I had a sit-down with our new innovation—I think, is it Innovation Director? Is that the appropriate title?
Director of Strategic Planning and Innovation.
Okay. I'll go with what you're saying. The acting city manager and also the development director—economic development director—to look at some—several green projects throughout the nation and seeing what would be a best fit, perhaps maybe a modification, but certainly to put Elk Grove on the map as a city that is going green and pushing for projects that are beneficial to the environment. Participate in salute to the red, white, and blue. Of course, like always, that is beautiful and always is safe. Had a teaching opportunity to share some photographs of what happens when you don't let the professional handle the fireworks. And my boys realize that it's probably better to go to Elk Grove Regional Park to watch professionals do it as opposed to buying your own fireworks. So, that, again, is a wonderful event that we continue to have, and I love it. In terms of the sanitation, it was canceled this morning, and I have nothing else. So, thank you. Next item.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
That one—Vice Mayor Sune's comment about the signals prompted me to—a while back, and maybe it's Bob, it's either you or Ryan—there was no interconnection to the Williamson. And you were talking—you told me probably a year ago that we had to trench down to there to get hardwired. Have we ever completed that connection down to Williamson?
Ryan Chapman, Public Works. Yes, that connection was made as part of the ITS Phase IV project that was recently completed.
And so, we've completed all the—the lack of better words, the intelligence connection to be able to have all the conductivity working as efficiently as we can?
Yes. At this time, all of the signals are connected with mostly copper and are communicating with the TMC, and we can monitor them. The only thing I would add to that is, you know, doing it over copper really restricts the flow of data, and so, we have cameras and data. If you go into the traffic control center, what you'll see are some screens that are blank, because the copper just doesn't have the capability of transferring the data needed like fiber. So, I think probably one of the next phases is to start creating a fiber ring to be able to tie those in, so the data and video and the data is transmitted at a rate that we can really—that will really improve what we do.
Well, if we just pulled—why didn't we pull fiber in? Was there not able to accept that at this time?
When we were looking at the original project, there was the need to connect all the signals, and with the budget we had available, we were looking at making these copper connections. There were some cases where we considered adding additional fiber, but then we would have been trying to do a fiber-to-copper-to-fiber connection, and we would not have been able to utilize what we were installing.
Okay.
We're basically—we were restricted. We basically had to kind of use what was mostly there, with the idea of—the first—with the first goal of interconnecting everything and be able to at least control it. And then, you know, the second phase is, okay, how do we expand it using copper—I mean, using fiber to be able to make it more efficient?
What percentage is copper versus fiber now? Do you have any rough idea?
Less than 10 percent of the system is on fiber.
Wow. Okay. So, you're talking about a pretty major overhaul to change all that out.
Yes.
Do we—you have a ballpark what that is going to cost?
I don't have a good estimate for that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Maybe at a future meeting, you could come back with that. Thank you.
Excellent. Next item, please.
Take us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Okay. I see that no members of the public have signed up to speak. Want to open and close public comment and council deliberation.
Move consent.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor? Aye, 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 ahs, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider a determination of public convenience or necessity for a Type 20 license for beer and wine sales at the Circle K Fuel Center, Sheldon Place Center located at the southwest corner of Sheldon Road and East Stockton Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Sarah Kirchgussner, planning. The project consists of a request for a determination of public convenience or necessity for the Circle K Fuel Center at the Sheldon Place Center for a Type 20 alcohol license from ABC. The Type 20 license would allow for the sale of beer and wine for off-sale consumption off-site. The Circle K Fuel Center will be located within an approved shopping center located on the corner of Sheldon Road at East Stockton Boulevard. The Sheldon Place Center project was approved by the Planning Commission in April. The Circle K is located in the northeast corner of the center. The shopping center has not yet been constructed. The project site is located in Census Track 9323, which ABC considers to have an overconcentration of off-sale liquor licenses. of off-sale liquor licenses. There are currently five active off-sale licenses in the same census tract. The nearest retail location is the Sheldon Wine Shop, which is located north of the project site, which is actually located in a different census tract. The other five locations within the census tract are located along Bond Road over a mile away. No schools or parks are located within 1,000 feet of the project site. The police department does not have a public safety-related objection to the issuance of the license at this location. The addition of this license would most likely result in a redistribution of existing sales in the area. The applicant states that customers will enjoy certain conveniences at this location, such as shorter walks from the vehicle to the store, easier access and selection within the store, faster transactions, and longer shopping hours. The project is exempt from CEQA, and staff recommends approval of the PCN determination for the license. I believe the applicant, Pete Tobin, is here tonight to answer any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Sarah, in the, in the briefing, you weren't there, but we talked about the issue of single containers. I know that this might not be the exact form for needing to have that included, but if possible in the future, I'd like to make sure that that language shows up in everything related to these requests, if that's possible.
In terms of the PCN or the project overall, I know that the police department did indicate that the single unit sales would be a condition of the license, the actual ABC license. In the past, there are times when that type of condition has been added to the design review. At the time, the project came for the design review, such as in this case, the Sheldon Place Center. But conditions aren't typically placed on the determination of public convenience or necessity.
Joan, is this something we could add in here? I mean, I know it may be a duplicate of other documents, but I think for clarity for everybody, is that something that could be added in?
Yeah, so ABC will not accept conditions on the PCN itself. So what they do, and what the police department will do and staff does, is we request that those conditions be imposed on the license itself when the license comes forward. This is just a determination as to whether or not alcohol sales will be allowed at all. And keep in mind that ABC has a final call on that. The, the council makes a determination, but that's not final. That's in some sense a recommendation from the local agency, and ABC makes a final determination. Typically, they defer to the local agency. In fact, they probably almost do, but they don't have to. So the, the language that you're concerned about, about single-serving sales, if I said that right, that would go on the license itself. Now, what we could do is, with these thoughts in mind, is watch the CUP's Conditional Use Permit and the design reviews a little bit closer and make sure that we impose those conditions as they come forward. We could do that. Conditional use permits are easy. We could probably do on design review as well and capture them that way. But we're sensitive to this issue, and I met with Police Chief and Detective Montgomery today on this issue, along with the Development Services Director, and we all concluded that we'll make sure that this gets put on the license itself. If you like, we can convey with the PCN that this is a concern for the council, but it wouldn't be a, a formal condition.
Be a binding issue, just be a, be a request to have, make sure it's included.
Yeah, it would really just kind of highlight it for when the actual license comes forward, because this isn't the license itself. That goes through a process a little later, where they put more formalized conditions on it.
Yeah, just so it doesn't drop through the cracks, I'd like to see if we could at least include that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you. Okay, at this point, want to declare public hearing open. I'd like to invite the applicant, Pete Tobin or George Carpenter, to come on up.
Members of the council, Pete Tobin with Barghousen Engineers. Tulley Oil is going to be the owner and operator, and they've been in business for 40 years. They have 12 other locations, and they're going to be a very responsible operator, and they have a fantastic track record. I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. Thank you. At this point, want to open for public comment. Seeing that there are no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. And Mr. Applicant, would you like to come on up and close?
You want to rebut yourself?
All right, that being the case.
Well, we'd like a good argument.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, let's stick our public hearing closed first, and then we have a motion.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention. All right. Next item.
Take us on to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the reported delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Jamie Bandi, Revenue Manager. I'm here this evening to present the report of delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their submission to the county for tax collection. I have prepared a brief presentation this evening to just sort of illustrate what our process was this year. As we do each year, the city does utilize the tax roll process to help us recover any costs that we have already incurred. It is most cost-effective to collect on those charges, and it really is less intrusive on the residents than the collection process. A little bit of background, last year, effective July 1st, 2017, the city did contract with Republic Services to transition the billing responsibility over to them. At that time, Republic Services began billing new charges July 1st, 2017, moving forward. Any accounts that still had balances from the city accounts, that money remained due to the city. So any of the accounts that are included on the delinquent report are accounts that were delinquent prior to the July 1st transition to Republic Services. Just a quick timeline. The last utility bill that the city generated to our customers was in May and June of 2017. That was our regular billing that went out to approximately 52,000 account holders. As of June 30th, all of the bills at that point had been due, and what was outstanding was just about 6,900 accounts, which represents about 13% of our total customers. Moving on, what we did next was we did send out our first delinquent notice to about 5,500 customers. At that time, that notice did include service address information, account information, including their outstanding balance. And we did have quite a few people that responded to those letters and brought those accounts current. And then the next delinquent notice that we sent out was in the January, February 2018 timeframe. At that time, what was remaining was about 3,700, 3,800 account holders. And again, with that notice, the same information was included, the service address, their account number, as well as their outstanding balances. And then most recent, on June 20th, what we sent out was the public hearing notification, which was really just informing people of tonight's meeting. At that point, we had only 1,100 accounts left that had an outstanding balance. So as you see, that only represents about 2% of all the customers. And what was left at that time was about $89,000 worth of charges to collect. Because that was just a notification of tonight's meeting, that is why the dollar amounts were not included on that notice. And then as of today, the last count, we actually had closer to 450 accounts that have already been brought current out of those 1,100. So we really have had a great response. Customers do still have until July 27th to bring their accounts current, and anybody who does will be removed from that delinquent list and will not be submitted to the county for collection. Are there any questions I can answer?
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Jamie, and I appreciate you getting on the issues that, that you and I communicated on. So from, from the Facebook posts that I saw, and then we connected, right?
Yes.
Have you been able to address anyone else, you know, getting more clarification, wanting more clarification about this process? Has there been any more calls coming in from that feed?
I don't know if it's necessarily from that feed, but we have had customers coming to us almost every day, either in the office or on the phone, and we've been able to help all of the customers and sort of explain what the process has been and, and help resolve all of those accounts.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I don't, I'm sure the city manager's office have informed you, but I had one frantic email, and there was a exchange and a conversation, but it sounds like most of it has been resolved because this particular conversation that I had was that she, she swears that she's never received any notice prior to.
Right.
And I, I just can't seem to believe that that's the case. So, there were obviously multiple notices that were sent out?
Yes.
Okay, through a period of how many months?
Their, their regular last billing that they would have received was May 2017, so last year. And between the last year, we would have sent out two more delinquent notices before we even sent out this public hearing notice.
Okay, and the notice was sent with the city logo with the
Yes.
indication it's official communication from the city?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I mean, who knows? I mean, this particular constituent may have accidentally thrown away, what have you, but, you know, I'm not saying that she's inaccurate, but I certainly want, for the record, to preserve that multiple notices were actually sent out.
Yes, they were.
So, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Good. All right. At this point, want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for a public opportunity to speak, and seeing that no members of public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment opportunity.
Move staff's recommendation.
Okay, want to close public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstention. Next item.
Take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with Item 10.1, which is consider a resolution establishing the user fees for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center.
Good evening, councilmembers. Lomayoshmura, Community Event Center Manager. Before you tonight are the proposed fees for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. These are the desired outcomes that we looked at when we established the fees that we wanted to achieve when looking at the fee structure for the new aquatic center. Our methodology is listed below. We consulted with CSD numerous times, as well as contacted the two local swim teams to have community buy-in on the rates that we would be charging for the aquatic center. The proposed fees meet our desired outcomes, including offering a 20% discount on Laguna Ridge residents on passes and rentals at the facility. It also will align with market rates with aquatic services throughout the region and make us competitive in terms of events for swim season, like swim meets and regional and state meets. One thing I do want to bring your attention to is that there is a small caveat on the cost recovery estimate that's listed here. That estimate is based on a full year of operations. Typically, the swim season works from about Memorial Day to Labor Day. Because of our delayed opening, we're going to miss that peak this year. So this revenue model that you're looking on, the cost recovery, is going to be reduced for the first year. I wanted to offer a sample of the user fees that are included within the resolution and the staff report. You'll see from this, we're using Lapswindham as an example. The passes include the Laguna Ridge rate of 20% discounted. Also, there you will notice that there is no discount on the drop-in rate. That was a discussion with, had with CSD, and it's very difficult to verify residency when somebody drops in, especially if it's a child. Staff also considered a non-resident rate for the facility and had numerous discussions with CSD, and we're not recommending pursuing this at this time for the following reasons that are listed. Currently, CSD doesn't charge a non-resident rate, we think, for customer service, as well as simplicity of use for the community. It would be confusing if we charged a non-resident rate at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center, and Wacford didn't, so we're not recommending it at this time. The user fees are likely to be reevaluated within the next year or two, as the minimum wage increases and CSD fees are reevaluated. So if the council would like us to relook at that issue, we will consider it in the next year or two, but at this time, we're not recommending going forward with a non-resident rate.
You know, relative to that, you and I've spoke about that, and I spoke about it with, with staff. So when you, when it gets reevaluate, if this passes tonight, if it gets reevaluated in a year, what I'd like to see, if there's, if we're turning away residents of Elk Grove because the use from people outside the area, basically, coming in and flooding our facilities, because I know that already happens at the Wacford Center. Not only our facility, maybe it's something to, to bring up with CSD to make sure that we're servicing Elk Grove residents first and then everybody else beyond that.
We can certainly do that, councilmember.
Thank you.
So in looking at that, we will reconsider the non-resident rate and discuss that with CSD as we move forward with the aquatic center.
Because I know one of the issues people talked about IDs for kids. I think most of the kids now have student body cards. So at least, at least if the schools are in the city, or but the city at least, like Sheldon High School, that we'd be able to accommodate that.
It's definitely something that we can discuss as we move forward. I'm not completely clear how CSD would determine that, but with Laguna Ridge, what we're going to do is we're going to give them a GIS list of resident addresses that would be within the Laguna Ridge area. They would have to verify that basically that person lived at that via the utility bill or driver's license. That person would then get the discounted rate, which is why passes and rentals are what we're looking at for that discounted rate.
I think that's really important that we do that, since they're footing a lot of the bill on this.
We agree.
Actually, to, sorry, to Councilman Detrick's point, could we expand that to, to include city residents in, if that was the way you wanted to? If you're verifying Laguna Ridge residents, maybe you broaden it to.
That's to get a discount.
Yeah, I know, but you want to, you're saying for non-residents, you, we go the other way, where you're confirming residential status. That might get at your point.
Right. That, that would be one of the options of student body cards, driver's license, or utility bills for, but the issue is that was very valid that was brought up. So all of a sudden, you know, somebody drops their child off, they go up there and they go, prove your residency. He goes, well, I just got dropped off by my parents. I don't even, I only got the money for it to get in. I don't have anything else with me. You know, then are you going to turn them away? That's the problem they don't want to get into, so.
Okay.
So, that concludes my report. I do want to take a moment to thank CSD for their expertise and their cooperation and partnership in the aquatic center. It's been very invaluable in terms of moving this project forward. I will take any questions that you have, council.
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor, no? No? Councilman Hume?
Thank you. My question, first of all, I appreciate the discounted rate for Laguna Ridge residents, given that they are vis-a-vis their Melrose fees paying for a good portion of this facility, from a daily use and a monthly pass perspective. However, when we get into renting the pool per hour, is there a distinction between swim meet competitions versus
An aquatic rental?
recreational type use?
So let's say that you're having a large family party, and you'd like to rent out the pool, and the opposite course, that would be a different type of meet than like the swim meet fee that would be on there, because those are different types of uses and require different types of guards and as well as staffing for it. That's why there's two different rates for aquatic rentals, which is a facility rental versus a swim meet rental.
I'm sorry, so I apparently missed, then, is that under the pool party packages?
So, under aquatic rentals?
Yes.
There are the per lane, and then there's like the pool per hour charges. So if you were to rent the pool per hour charges, there is a Laguna Ridge rate there, as well as a regular rate. So you could rent the pool by the hour. You could include the inflatable as an add-on.
Correct.
If you were throwing a large party, versus the swim meet, which is on the following page for a half-day meet or a full-day meet.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, at this point, want to open up for public comment. I have one speaker sign up to speak. Marion Huff, come on up. Either one.
Thank you to the city council. The only thing we would like to request is that you consider a senior rate. There are a lot of seniors that live in this area, and they are on fixed incomes, and the consideration of a senior rate would be very helpful.
Glenbrook would qualify for the 20% discount.
True, but not all of the Laguna Ridge areas, Glenbrook is in the Laguna Ridge area, but there are other senior centers outside of Laguna Ridge, and I'm sure they would appreciate a discounted rate also.
That's a good point.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. There are no other members of public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counter deliberation and direction. Members?
I'm in favor of a senior rate.
I'm too, yep.
Nope, so am I.
Especially since I'm a senior.
You look great, though.
Sir Hobbs, is that a conflict of interest? Oh, you abstained there, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The joke was, is it a conflict of interest me to vote on a senior discount?
I was talking to the manager, I didn't hear that. Yeah, it is for you, you're disqualified. You're out. No, obviously it's not. But, but the question that I have is, do you want to impose a senior rate now? Is that something you want to bring back and, and change? And if you want to do it now, what would you want the rate to be? Obviously, staff hasn't analyzed the finances of that, so we can get a little direction from the council on that, something to consider.
So would it be, would it be, I'm trying to make it simple, if we applied, the senior rate would be a 20% discount similar to the Laguna Ridge residents? Is that Is that, because that would be what Glennbrook would get?
I mean, that's certainly simple. I mean, if you just take a percentage and apply it, what I don't know, and I would ask staff to weigh in if she has any comments, is what that does to the finances. Obviously, it's less money to the city, but I don't know what that does in the big picture finances. That just hasn't been studied.
I think the other issue is too, you'd have to determine if you could, you couldn't stack them, correct? You couldn't get the Laguna Ridge discount and the senior discount too.
Right. Oh, I see.
You gotta pay me $5 to swim here.
And the other question, if it's not obvious, where do you want to cut off the senior? At what age? I mean, that could be defined in different ways.
Well, if you do it like the ski resort, you start at 75.
How old are you, Councilmember Detrick? No, okay.
It just raises some questions, whatever you guys want.
We can certainly look at a senior rate. I would ask for clarification on what a senior means, just because that's different to different people, so clarification on that. In terms of the rates that maybe the seniors are looking for, the rates that are set here, they wouldn't affect classes or things like that that seniors might utilize, like let's take aqua aerobics. Our aqua aerobics, we looked at as pricing it exactly as CSD prices it, at $4 for a drop-in, and then there's also a pass that you could buy for a 10 visit. So, we didn't analyze that because that requires course registration, so that got into a very difficult and challenging level of coordination that was hard for CSD to justify. So, if you signed up for a swim lesson and you wanted Saturday at 10 o'clock, you would have to pay more to go to the Elk Grove Aquatic Center versus Wacford. We didn't know if that would hurt our business in the beginning, just because we want to make the most of the facility. So, we did not offer it on classes or drop-in types of rates. So, I'm not sure if that...
I'm assuming CSD does not have a senior discount at the Wacford?
They do not. They do not.
Okay. I think, I think we're going to have to, I would ask you to research it then and bring it back. We could then research potential age where we define a senior for the purposes of this fee reduction, and whether we want to do it. Is that, am I okay with folks?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd recommend, if the council's okay, go ahead and adopt the fees tonight, and we'll come back later with an addition of a senior rate.
Yes, that's the, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Is that your motion?
Make the motion with that direction.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extension? Next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which is consider resolution adopting amended speed control program guidelines.
Where's Ed Owens?
Good evening. I'm Ryan Chapman of Public Works, and I'm here to discuss the speed control guidelines. So, the last time the council considered the speed control guidelines was 2014, and since then, there have been no successful applications for speed humps. We have reviewed the program and are recommending making the following changes. The changes, the major changes include modifying the petition. Currently, the petition requires 75% support for the residents fronting the street as well as 10 signatures. We'd recommend removing the 10 signature requirement and just have 75% support. We recommend completely removing the minimum street length, the minimum and maximum daily traffics, and the 85th percentile speed. In addition, we are recommending adding a approval for the actual location of the speed hump. So, if at the end of the process, the recommendation would be install a speed hump fronting your property, you would have to sign off on a form indicating that you are supporting of that. And then we are removing, are recommending removing the ranking system and prioritizing the requests on a first-to-come, first-to-serv basis, based on the date that the city received a complete petition. In addition, we've made numerous other changes. We've removed redundant language, clarified requirements and other language in the program so that it is hopefully more intuitive and user-friendly, and clarified the role between the city and CSD Fire. We are not changing several requirements. That includes that the street must be a two-lane residential street eligible for a 25 mile an hour speed limit. CSD Fire must concur with the proposal, and we do need a petition and ultimately a survey showing the support of the community for the installation of the speed humps. I am available if there are any questions.
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, I was just curious, for the, for the chart, if you require 75% to petition, do you, why would we still need 75% for the survey, or do you consider these separate things where you petition or survey not wanting speed humps?
So, the petition really starts the process, and it shows that there is a desire in the community to do something about the issue, and that the community realizes, or the majority of the community, the neighborhood realizes there's a speeding issue. When we get ready to the specific placement of the humps, we're looking for, this is our proposal, this is our plan, and we really want to show that support, again, to the specifics of what are being proposed. Sometimes, these humps can be very divisive issues for the neighborhood, and we're really trying to make sure that we have a consensus when we're moving forward and not doing anything to cause problems.
So, you, the speed hump location approval would, would serve as that, correct?
The speed hump, the speed hump location approval is really geared at the resident or the property owner that has a speed hump in front of their house, and it's really a way, if this particular person is opposed to the speed hump, we don't have that signature, we would skip that hump, and we would redesign as best we could to not put it there. And it's really to deal with if an individual has an issue versus just the consensus of this proposal for the entire neighborhood.
Okay. So, just to summarize, so the process, 75% of residents sign a petition wanting to investigate getting speed humps. Then, when you determine a speed hump plan, you again ask for 75% of residents to approve the overall plan. Then, if for each resident that would have a speed bump in front of their residence, they would have a separate approval. Is that correct?
Well, it would be the resident, we receive the petition, we work with CSD Fire, we put together some sort of a plan, we go out to the specific residents that are going to be directly affected with a hump in front of their house, get their sign off on it, make changes to the plan if we need to, and then take the full plan out for the survey.
The survey, okay. Okay. I mean, I, I think I see what we're trying to do. Let's, let's try it out, I think, you know, so we move this forward. My, my just concern is we might have a redundant process a little bit here, but, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, I'm just curious, with respect to the ranking system, why, why was the decision made to move away from using the points to prioritize a project? It would seem like some requests are more a matter of resident desire and where other requests might be more a matter of true public safety or life safety.
We haven't seen a lot of requests come in, to the point that we don't really have a backlog of projects. Right now, there's two projects that are under the current program or at the survey step, and I'm still getting surveys in from the public, but those are the only two projects that have gotten this far in the process in the last, about, two years at least.
So, is the hourglass then more a matter of funding necessarily than prioritizing?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Detrick.
Yeah, I don't know, when you're, when you're looking at these, I think if the Elk Grove PD or Fire have, have one that maybe they look as a, as a higher area that would be benefit issues they've been having, that maybe that's, rises the level of where we are in the priority. And then second would be, one thing we talked about in my briefing is being able to reach out to folks that didn't qualify before, and I believe you said that you're going to be doing that, reaching out to folks that wanted to do this but didn't have, it did not meet the prior criteria.
Yes, we're going to research the records and find anyone that submitted a petition and was not eligible under these requirements. Tell them that the two-year waiting period that normally exists to resubmit has been waived for their project and see if they wanted to pursue moving forward.
No, I, I think you guys have done a, done your due diligence, and I think it's a much better product than we have before. Jason?
Yeah. Mayor, if I might, I want to just address Vice Mayor Soons' comment about potential redundancy in the system. I thought about that same thing, but I think there is a significant difference between a petition and a survey. A lot of times, neighbors walk around doing a petition, neighbors can feel pressure to sign a petition when their neighbor's standing in front of them outside wanting to do that versus, and they may have a totally different opinion when they get a private survey that they get to fill out. And so, we want to make sure that it wasn't neighbors succumbing to peer pressure by filling out a petition. They really legitimately agree with that, and so I think, really, you could get different results from a petition versus the final survey.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That makes sense.
Okay. I got a question. Existing parameters, I believe during the briefing, there has never ever been any project that's been approved with existing? Is that accurate?
There were a number of speed control projects prior to 2014 that were approved and went out to construction, but since the program was amended in 2014, there has not been a successful project.
Okay. So, in the event that we adopt this new proposed, these proposed guidelines, would there be a retroactive notification for those that have wanted speed humps in?
Yes. I'm going to find all the petitions that we have received that were, where they were deemed not eligible for the program for whatever reason, reach out to them and tell them that there is another opportunity to move forward.
And how far, how far back will we go?
I can go back to 2014, which is when the program changed. Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, we're going to go back out and ask if they're interested. They're going to have to resubmit a survey.
Oh, I see.
Because we don't know if the residents that were there originally supporting it are still there.
Oh.
You may have a different makeup. Now, I think the one, the one change we made is we recognized that Mecca Road is very new, and that we were just going to proceed with that if, if the changes were made, because Mecca Road would then qualify under the new criteria.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? No? No more questions? Thank you, Ryan. Want to open public comment, seeing no members of public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counter direction and direction. Got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extension? Next item.
Take us on to item 10.3, which is to receive and file the 2018 Amgen Tour of California Host City Events Summary Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Nelson, your Public Affairs Manager, and I'm going to close a couple of things out here. They say that a picture's worth a thousand words. I know it's only Wednesday today. We're going to do kind of a Throwback Thursday, if you will, with a short video for you first.
Hello, this is Kristin Klein, the President of the Amgen Tour of California, and I would like to thank the City of Elk Grove for hosting the men's Stage 5 finish and the women's Stage 1 of the Amgen Tour of California. All of this would not be possible without the support from the Elk Grove City Council and their local presenting sponsor, Explore Elk Grove. Again, we appreciate all of the support and contributions this year and look forward to coming back to Elk Grove in the future. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our multimedia specialist, Krista Lumry, for putting that together for us. So, that kind of gave you the overview of what that day looked like, and I'm here to provide just a few more slides that give you a bit more information on the planning and the work that was involved leading up to that day and some of the other associated benefits that we received from our participation. So, there's probably very few city staff that did not get involved in producing the, the event this year in some shape or form, but the local operating committee was led by our Public Affairs Office and the Police Department. It did require a multi-departmental and multi-agency coordination, so we had several different local agencies as well as neighboring law enforcement agencies involved. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. We did have about a 20-week planning period from the time that we had agreed to go into contract with AEG Group until the race day, so it was kind of a, a race to get to the race, if you will. Our city took a much larger role in the event this year as the Stage 1 Women's Race Host City, so we opened the women's races and the Stage 5 Men's Finish. There was a lot of pre-planning that was managed by a number of staff, but race day staffing giving you that viewpoint. We had more than 100 police officers on duty that day. We had 19 other city staff that were working on various elements of the event, and we had 114 different volunteers engaged in working the race. We had some interesting event first. For the first time, we hosted an event at the Civic Center. At least, that's what we're counting it as. It hasn't opened officially yet, but it was in close enough proximity that we think that it's a, a good first to note here, and we expect lots of other milestone events like that to happen in that area in years to come. We were, this was the first Elk Grove event to recycle organic food waste. So, what does that mean? It means we diverted more than 3,100 pounds of food from local landfills, which is a positive thing. And this is the first time that the city created its own event hotline for a particular race or festival or event, and that was mostly the calls that we received on race day were people looking for assistance on, how do I get out of this area? How do I go pick up my child? We tried to put as much information as possible onto the city's website. We worked with a number of schools in proximity to the race route to create customized detour plans. The Police Department was a lead in that particular project, and we worked very closely with the school district, but people still had some questions, and so we tried to help out where we can, and that's where our hotline came into play. There were a couple of other noteworthy numbers that we thought were worth sharing. We had approximately 4,000 visitors to the Lifestyle Festival that day. The event occurred on a Thursday. We were promoting it as the New Friday, time to take the day off ahead of Friday. A few people did that. We did see from some of the news coverage, there were people that were coming from out of town that make this a vacation experience for themselves. I don't know if you saw that too or had a chance to meet some of them, but it's a lot like when the US goes to follow the tour to France, we have visitors that are coming more domestically to catch the Tour of California. There were 865 athletes and support staff involved in the event this year, and as you can see from the picture there, we awarded a key to the city. I was dubbing that photo a keyboard. They gave us a really great surfboard that was customized for the city. We're still looking for a place to hang that. That's a, a place of honor, but the, the city council that were able to attend that day seemed to like it.
I got a place at the lake, I can put that.
So, the city, one of the, the reasons that we look to engage with this group is it's the largest cycling event in North America. It has a huge marketing benefit to that. It puts Elk Grove on the map, and we saw certainly a, a media return on that. According to AEG, and there's a more detailed packet of information about the marketing brief in your, in your booklet, we had more than 16 million media impressions where Elk Grove was mentioned through either our own stuff or AEG's stuff or, or people retweeting, so it, it gained a lot of momentum, and on social media alone, there was 217 posts and more than 38,000 different engagements or responses to things that were specifically calling out Elk Grove. Our web pages combined between the Host City page that AEG activated and our own city page, we had more than 85,000 webpage views, and we had created both a 15-second tour tracker ad and a 30-second television commercial that were tied with this event, and we got a good number of views off the tour tracker. And probably, I thought, the most interesting measure that we'd gotten through one of our sources that monitors media coverage is on race day alone in our local market, we had 118 different segments that talked about Elk Grove. It was, you know, the day that the race was here, and it was the first stop in the region for the race, so we got a lot of attention, 3.2 million viewers, and if you had to pay for that level of publicity, it's believed that it would cost nearly a quarter of a million So, the other numbers that we were talking about, we, we had gotten some assistance from... from Explore Elk Grove. This is the first time that we have ventured into trying to create some sort of an economic impact analysis for an event here in Elk Grove. Visit or Explore Elk Grove assisted us with this. They also contacted Visit Sacramento, and they followed what is kind of universally based formula that's created by the National Association of Sports Commissions. So what they have told us is that through the four days of lodging, because our location served as the hub for the men's teams, there was roughly $500, $1,700 generated in economic activity by the athletes and the support staff here, another $156,000 generated through spectators that are buying food, fueling up, that sort of thing, and we had roughly 4,000 of them here that, on that day, for a total estimated economic activity in the area of When you add to that the estimated publicity value that I just shared with you, we're looking at a essential return on investment of $905,500. Just to be clear, the city did invest heavily in this event, and our expenses were roughly $312,000. That included our staffing overtime, our hospitality expenses that were associated with our agreement to host the, the athletes, and a lot of marketing and things like that. And there's a little more detail, I think, in the staff report about that. And then we secured roughly just over $50,000 in local sponsorship. So tonight, we're just asking you to receive and file this report and to consider maybe how you'd like to participate in the future.
Okay. Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Kristin, not, not a question so much as just wanted to thank you and the team for all the work you guys did on this and all the officers and staff that worked overtime to help make this happen. So it was great, great job. We, I think we all had a great time out there. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel member?
I'm, I'm going to echo the Vice Mayor's comments. I had an, an amazing time. I mean, it was so, it was so great to have that experience, being backstage and listening to the announcer and how excited he was and how well he did that, but also to see the presence of our law enforcement team there. And that video, can I get a copy of that video? I'd like to share that around. Then I also want to thank the Vice Mayor, because I believe Amgen came to Elk Grove because you contacted them and asked, right, if, if they would be interested in hosting one here in the city.
Well, it was, it was, it was my wife who saw it go through Lodi and said, why aren't we doing this here in Elk Grove? So I just, I shot off an email to City Manager Laura Gill, and that's when we had the first one last year. That's all.
You do what your wife says. Good man.
I do, absolutely. My wife says. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's a great presentation.
Counsel member? Detrick?
Yeah. Again, I, I couldn't be here. I was out of town on business, but I, I did follow it. And phenomenal to bring these kind of things to Elk Grove. You know, obviously, not only the Elk Grove and regional and state recognition, but what we saw nationally and even the international coverage that took place on this. You know, for, for a first-time event, a lot, a lot of times you do need seed money to get the name out there and everything else. Hopefully, as we move forward on this, at some point, you know, I, I'd like to see if there's any feasibility to raise the sponsorship levels and income side that we can actually end up being hopefully a, a cost neutral on it. But I think it's, you know, great for the city, the exposure that we got also will probably overlap with economic development, with folks being able to just say, hey, Elk Grove's got a lot of really good stuff going on. It's just one more feather in our cap. So thank you for everything you and the entire team did. Jason, I mean, all you guys put in a, a lot of work from every department to make this happen, so thank you.
Counselman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo everything that's been said and note that the, with that economic impact analysis that you put together, it doesn't necessarily relate apples to apples as far as what the city put out and what the city brought in. The revenue side was more of a, a revenue generated, not necessarily the transit occupancy taxes or sales taxes that are the actual net revenue to the city. However, that is indicative of the amount of money that was spent in the community, many of our small businesses, many of our hotels, many of our shops and things. But I, I have to say, to echo what my colleague said, what a fantastic time it was being out there. And I really hope that if we bring this event back, that the community really, because I did meet some folks that had come from Portland and Colorado and, but I didn't really feel like the people right here in town got out and, and just, if nothing else, even if you aren't into, to bicycle racing, just to see the spectacle of it was, was phenomenal. But for me, the most rewarding aspect of the day was, was before really the, the hoopla even started, a woman walking with her young daughter, maybe, I don't know, six, seven, eight years old, and commenting to her, can you believe that this is happening right down the street from our house? And it's like, you know, some of these things I think is just an investment in the fabric of your community. And beyond the, the exposure that it brought to Elk Grove, just to, to, to have these types of things and really highlight what makes this, this community so unique. So thank you to, to all the staff that, that put in hard work on it.
Excellent. Wonderful job. It was the first time in which I, I was able to practice my French with folks who are visiting from France. So that brings to note something that I feel is, is spectacular, being able to put Elk Grove on a global stage. And, you know, I mean, there is, you know, countless folks that have sent me emails saying, hey, we now know where Elk Grove is, and I think that in itself has its value. And of course, to all the city staffers who have volunteered and stepped up to make this happen, I am just tickle pink. Thank you very much.
Do you, did you need more direction from us for the future?
I think we would like to know where you're at with hosting for the future.
Thumbs up.
Question though, Kristin, did, in your staff report, you mentioned something about the race kind of, you know, moving south. Is that, what was that in reference to you?
So what the race organizers have told us is that they're, they alternate in each year where they start and where they finish. So last year, they started in the south and they worked their way north, so we ended up as one of the finishing locations, so one of the later stages. What they intend to do next year is start north and work their way south. So what that can mean is that we may not be eligible for the women's race because it starts later in the week, and that it may be their, a men's start or finish that is on an earlier time in the week. So they, they tend to start either on that Saturday or Sunday. They varied with that. And so we could end up with something that's like a Monday or a Tuesday, so it's not necessarily generating a weekend crowd again. I think there were some other things that we know are taking place, and there's a lot of construction. Our, our city is building a lot of civic amenities. We definitely would have the benefit of potentially a new hotel and the Civic Center being open, having more available parking and being a better, I guess, customer service experience if we maybe waited a year. And I think that's kind of what staff was recommending just from our perspective. There were some challenges that would not necessarily be there in 2020 that are present now that we've had to work through, and it may have generated some additional costs in this year that would be eliminated with the opening of the Civic Center. But we don't know exactly what their plan is, and we won't know. They won't start extending Host City invitations until late summer or early fall. They have inquired whether we have an interest in hosting, and I told them we're presenting to you guys tonight. We would know more later.
I venture, I think there's an interest, but maybe if you want to come back when they, you know, when they open or when they, in the fall or wherever you're, whatever you're saying, we might have a better decision point at that time? What if, how do you folks feel?
Well, I, I like to hear from our public. We have one speaker that signed up to speak, so I have no additional questions. Let's go ahead and open public comment and call Ms. Lynn Wheat to comment and share what your thoughts are.
Good evening. I provided copies of my comments, but let me go ahead and read them. I want to thank Ms. Nelson for the report. From a public affairs aspect, this report left me feeling very good about an event I like. But just as a report that followed the ice rink in Old Town, liking an event doesn't necessarily mean it makes financial sense. The report lacks specific data, which I believe you as the leaders and stewards of our tax dollars need to be asking for. To begin with, exactly how much of our tax dollar monies were spent? Estimated 800 hours in planning. Was school coordination included in the 800 hours? Was this included in the cost numbers provided? How much did the planning stage cost? 100 police department employees. What was the cost? Any overtime paid? Public Works contractor, 167 hours. Cost? What did we spend in marketing in comparison to the estimated market publicity value of more than $247,000? ATOC's contracted rooms, 186,000. Is this what the city paid? The expenses associated with food, lodging, et cetera, of athletes estimated to generate more than half a million dollars. Does this include what city paid as described in the contract with Amgen? Am I correct that the estimated 4,000 spectators spent an estimated $39 on food, fuel, and other items during their event, visit to the event? And this is based on the 156,000 noted in the report? Do we have an estimate of how many visited from out of town? I attempted an estimate. If the 285 rooms sold out were filled and double occupied, we had 570 out-of-town guests besides the athletes and staff who stayed in the 290 rooms. I do not know the athletes and staff stayed for four nights in our town as they rode to other cities in our region. When we are discussing taxpayer dollars and the spending of our residents' monies, I most certainly think our leadership would want to have a more detailed and exact amount of our tax dollars spent before committing to another Amgen Tour race. I suggest, besides Ms. Nelson's report, we should have a report from our finance department that manages the budget. I believe we need to move past estimating and have exact dollar amounts of staff and contract work hours, advertising, hotel accommodations and meals, and any other costs associated with this event. Let us go beyond estimating the financial benefit and get the exact number. Was this the best use of our tax dollars and general fund budget when we're unable to keep, complete some of our road maintenance projects? And also, is this considering some of our residents that are need within our community that couldn't have, we could be using this money in another way to provide for our residents? And one thing, I did try to go through the warrants to try to figure out how much was being spent, and it was a little difficult because very, very tiny print, but I was able to come up with 12,000 plus in what I was reviewing. So I don't even know if we have the total numbers showing up in our budget, and that's why I'm encouraging that we receive a report from our finance department. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wheat. There are no additional speakers, so want to close public comment? Counsel deliberation and direction.
Yes, my suggestion, yes. I jumped the gun. My suggestion still stands that, you know, we proceed with the intent that we might bring it back, and then we just wait to hear when Ms. Nelson finds out more information.
I agree.
I would be interested in, in what the organizers have to say a little bit further down the line. I do like it, but I hear what Ms. Wheat has raised. When it comes down to it, everything is really a financial decision, whether we're going to benefit from it. It seems like an indication that the spillage with traffic, it does benefit our local businesses. And of course, I hear exactly what you've said, which is perhaps maybe we should wait a little bit longer before we bring it back. So right now, I'm open. I think it'd be nice to, to hear what they have a little bit later on, but at this point, I, I'm not prepared to commit for it, for next year. Yeah. Okay? Sufficient? All right. I think that's it. Next item.
Excellent. Take us to item 10.4, which is to consider appointment of five voting members to the Youth Commission. At the top of the week, I sent out some updated information. We did receive another application, so we have 17 applications. What we have are five vacancies on the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission is a 10-member body. Tonight would be, the appointments would be the decision of the mayor with the concurrence of the city council for those five open vacancies. If there's any other questions, I can respond to those.
Okay. So I see that a number of the applicants are here. Let's go ahead and open a public comment opportunity and invite the first one. And you're going to help me, help me pronounce this name. Iyemide Agbe Davies. Is that close?
Iyemide.
Okay, correct me. Come on up. Correct me.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay. Good evening. My name is Iyemide.
Hold on. How do you pronounce your name?
Iyemide Agbe Davies.
Iyemide.
Oh, my full name is Iyemide Agbe Davies.
Iyemide. Well, thank you.
Okay. I'm a sophomore, well, an incoming sophomore at Laguna Creek High School, and I would like to be part of the Elk Grove City Youth Commission because I have a passion for service, and I would love the opportunity to be an advocate for my peers, and I can see that being a part of this committee would be a chance to do that. I also believe that the Youth Commission would be a great way to expand my community service outreach as well as a great experience. I've grown a lot due to the many chances that I've had to interact with the people of Elk Grove by volunteering at different events such as the Salute to Red, White and Blue last weekend, and I would love to continue doing so. Elk Grove youth need as much support as we can receive, and there is a great need to create an atmosphere where, to foster increased parent and youth interaction. So thank you for this opportunity and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may?
Go ahead, please.
First of all, I was very impressed with your application, and I'm even more impressed with you and your poise at the podium, so congratulations. But I do have one question for you, is the, the deadline was July 3, and the stamp received by the clerk was after that deadline. Can you explain to me why you submitted your application late?
Oh, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Hung Yu Wang.
Well, she's walking up. Just so you guys, on the original list that came out, her district is actually District 3, not District 1. It's corrected on the addendum, on the revised one that they came out. She's number 16 on the, so she's.
15, yeah. Okay.
This is for Davies, right?
Yes. Or 15, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. My name's Hung Yu Wang. I'm going to be a senior at Elk Grove High School. Today, I hope to gain your support in this process of selecting new youth commissioners. For the last two weeks of June, I've engaged in a course about local government and issues facing Elk Grove community as part of the Elk Grove Civic Summer Program. During the time, we had many guest speakers, including all of the city council members. And one of the most important advice that I have received was to step up or be quiet. So I want to follow this piece of advice because not only does it push me to get out of my comfort zone to voice my opinion, but also I want to use my ability to help the youth of Elk Grove. And also, I would like to further my learning about local government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, any questions? No? Nope? Thank you. Our next speaker is Nihah Tandy.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the council. My name is Nihah Tandy, and I'm an incoming freshman at Franklin High School. I'm one of the candidates that has applied for a position on the Elk Grove Youth Commission. I would like to take a minute to summarize some of the reasons why I should be given an opportunity to serve the youth in our community. I've been a Girl Scout for the past eight years, and I've recently been working on the Girl Scout Silver Award Project. I've been visiting local elementary school classes and informing them on the importance of STEM, especially to young girls. I've been admitted to the Leadership Program at Franklin High School, and I've taken every opportunity in the past to be a leader and to make a difference. As an incoming freshman, I will be the voice for the young teenagers. If given the opportunity, I would like to reach out to the young teens in our community because I feel as if they too need to be given a platform to discuss issues in our community. I would be honored to represent and serve the youth in our community, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Are there no questions? Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Punit Shahal.
Good evening, council members. My name is Punit Shahal, and today I'm here to introduce myself to you as an applicant for Elk Grove's Youth Commission. I am an incoming senior at Pleasant Grove High School. At my high school, I have been an active member of the Public Service Academy since my freshman year and served as the academy's historian this past year. My involvement in this academy has helped me to develop excellent public speaking and organizational skills. I am also part of a group known as Link Crew at my school. This group organizes the school's freshman orientation and guides the ninth graders through high school. In addition to being in this academy, I have also been a member of the Future Farmers of America, or FFA, since ninth grade. I've also participated in a number of community service events. I helped to set up for a fundraising dinner at the Sacramento Animal Shelter, volunteered at the Sacramento Women's March, was a server at the Project Ride Crab Feed, and was in charge of organizing a banquet for my academy. Last summer, I was able to participate in Elk Grove Summer at City Hall program, and in June, I worked as a student poll worker for the California primary election. In addition to my involvement in high school activities and community service events, I've also been participating in the Hamequent Speech Competition from a very young age. Last year, I had the opportunity to compete at the international level here in Sacramento. Thank you, council members, for your time, and I hope that you consider me for a position on the youth commission.
Okay. Any questions? There are no questions. Thank you, ma'am. Brandon Wong.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Brandon Wong, and I'm an incoming sophomore who would like to be considered for one of the five positions in youth commission. Over the past five, few years, I have participated and volunteered in various events that the youth commission hosts, including the Teens Town Hall Forum, Respect, Shape Your Future, Party on the Palms, and Family Fun Day. Assisting in these events, I met various members of the youth commission, including Ms. Barilin, who encouraged me to apply. Additionally, I have tutored students in math and in the middle school cyber patriot team. Tutoring these students, I've, I have found great enjoyment teaching and helping my peers. I also me, I also enjoy meeting different students and being exposed to many various different backgrounds, which has helped me to learn how to deal with and apply appeal to different audiences. Additionally, this summer, I am volunteering at the Franklin Library to assist in its operations and concluding, and conducting summer activities and programs for children. Furthermore, I have been selected to participate in a four-year mentoring program at UC Berkeley's Haas School of Business, where we learn leadership skills, speaking skills, professional skills, and business skills. Here, I learned many lessons, including how to impact an audience and how to effectively communicate with others. In one project, we got to present to the Oakland A's with a marketing plan, which they would use to promote their own events. As a final point, I would like to join the youth commission to broaden my impact on the community, and I would be honored to appoint, be appointed to the youth commission. And I thank you for considering me for the third time, and I would, and I hope that I can bring my unique skills and experiences to the youth commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Last speaker is Shay Sharma.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Hello, my name is Shayneer Sharma, and I am a rising sophomore at Franklin High School. You may remember me from February, when once before I came to show my enthusiasm to represent the youth of Elk Grove. I have lived in Elk Grove all my life and want to be an active member of the Elk Grove Youth Commission for several reasons. First, I want to raise awareness of the important issues that affect the youth in my community, such as school security and violence, both inside and outside school ground. And with the new Costco and Aquatic Center, there will be more traffic, which may pose safety issues with pedestrians, social media overuse, drugs, bullying, food waste in schools, skincare protection to prevent skin cancer, as we live in California, and one-fifth of Americans develop skin cancer in their lifetime, and high, hand hygiene to prevent sickness. Second, I have had experience being a leader. I'm the founder and president of a much-needed STEM electronics club in my high school. My club runs free monthly electronic workshops for elementary schools and holds events at the public library for the community to learn electronics. I've had the experience being on the school council and have been involved in building community gardens, recycling programs, and community neighborhood safety programs. I am a hard worker and have always maintained a straight A average in school. I also volunteer weekly, tutoring students at the Franklin Community Library, from teaching young children to read to older students pre-calculus. Currently, I'm raising awareness for preventing skin cancer in the high school level at the Elk Grove Unified School District, a project that I am very passionate about and has won first place at the Placer STEM Fair and second at the Sacramento STEM Fair. I'm now working with the Elk Grove Unified School District Curriculum Department to have the basics of skin cancer prevention taught in health class. In addition, I have experienced, experienced meeting deadlines and working diligently by doing biology research at UC Davis. I am also a team player, having played soccer all my life and has a second-degree black belt in taekwondo, assisting juniors in practice. I have been the voice of my peers at school for many years and would be honored to represent their concerns at the city level. In conclusion, my concern, communication, and commitment to the community will be crucial as an important link in the role of an Elk Grove Youth Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to present myself.
Thank you. Any questions? There are no questions.
Welcome back.
Shay, do you sleep at all? Because I'm just kidding.
Full night.
Vice Mayor, maybe you didn't mention the part where he's a second-degree black belt.
Oh, yes, yes.
Lay off the teasing a little bit.
Good point, good point, counsel.
Thank you, Shay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Want to close public comment, seeing that there are no additional speakers and counsel deliberation and direction?
Mayor, just.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Again, I want to thank all, all of you for coming out tonight. Very impressed with your applications, resumes, and your, your, you're speaking at the podium. I do want to make note of a couple other applicants that couldn't be here tonight. I think all of you received an email from Adam Davis, who, who applied as well, but is on, on vacation with his family. And then there's Jason So, who I believe reached out to all of you. I did have a chance to meet with him, and he couldn't be here today because he's in New York pitching or working with this new venture capitalist with his new company that he's created. So again, just another testament to the quality of talent we have out there. I just wanted to add that before we started deliberating. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for the city clerk. The first question is, is on the district composition graph, are those the districts in which they reside or in which they attend school?
The way that that pans out, it's for both. So it's both they are residents and they attend schools in those districts. So for the five current standing, is that what you mean, is the current standing youth commissioners? They all reside.
So they all live in, they, they live and attend school in the same district?
Right, there's no split. They don't live in one district and the other.
If there's a couple of students who are, who live in one district and attend school in a different district, if that were the case, which, which district would show up on this graph?
We could end up doing two graphs if they end up splitting and it ends up being different if we want that differentiation level. Probably just put a notation because it depends on how many. I don't think we have a lot of situations where we have a, a student that resides in one district and attends school in another. It's usually pretty rare.
I think the listed first is the, where they live, and listed second is the.
No, I get that, I get that on the actual application breakdown. I'm talking about the existing composition of the youth commission itself. The, the table with the green bars. And then the second thing is.
The previous page shows, shows it. Shows the current, that they live in, all, all the current ones live in, go to, go to school in the same district.
Okay. And then the, the other thing that I would find helpful would be is if that chart included the age of the existing members?
Sure.
Because I think having a variance potentially in younger members.
They're all 17 right now.
They're all 17 right now? And you just know that from memory?
I asked the question already.
Okay. And then my final question is, is the stamp from the clerk's office, is that's the day the applications were received?
That is correct. For this recruitment sequence, the date filed, which also is listed in the, in the staff report, that's a listing of when it was received in the city clerk's office. We did have, for this cycle, we had the deadline is July 3rd, since the city offices were closed on July 4th. There is the opportunity that some of those might get postmarked. I wouldn't have postmark information for any ones that are submitted. But as a tradition for all committee applications that we, when we receive, the deadline primarily is to make our publishing deadline for the city council staff reports the Friday before the meeting. What we have always done as a tradition is we don't deny applications when they come in. We do receive applications for any committee. We green-sheet them to the council for the consideration for the most immediate appointment. But one of the primary reasons we accept all applications is we like to have an application pool, because when there's future vacancies, we send out an email to everyone that we have on file. And so we don't deny folks when they come in, but it might be a consideration, considering that there was a deadline set up and established for this recruitment cycle.
Jason, just to clarify then, maybe I didn't hear you correctly. So the July 3rd, if the, if the application came in on the 3rd, would it be possible that it didn't get post-stamped by your office until the 6th because of, or did, or right, because you?
The only scenario that I could see that would come up would be if it was coming through the mail, but almost every youth commission application is submitted in person. So we, we get them in person.
It was received on the 6th, okay.
And so then my final question would be, is I noticed some of the applications didn't have date stamps on them, but in the staff report, you note Kaylee Fan's date filed of May the 25th, but the stamp on the application itself is July the 20th.
That might be an earlier year because she's been an applicant that has applied year after, or through the different opportunities when there's vacancies. So the year stamp on there might be from a previous year. That's one of our folks that's been in an applicant pool.
Okay, so it's just the same application gets rolled over.
Right. And so when we say date filed in those instances, what it is, is I give out a courtesy notice when we first do the opening of the recruitment, and I put out the option to say, if you just want to reapply, just let me know, and I'll put you back into the pool. But what that does is that marks that timeframe of date filed basically means when they replied back to me that they continue to have an interest to want to be considered for an appointment.
All right. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Volunteers? Counselman Detrick?
Yes, I think one of the things we definitely need to consider is the diversity of where they live and where they go to school, so that we have a fair representation from all the high schools. And the only one from Elk Grove High School is Ms. Wang. So I, I think she would be one that I'd definitely highly recommend.
So I, I agree with not only that assessment, but also the general assessment of the diversity of, of high schools and.
And district.
And district residences. And so that would also fall on Adam Davis, Jalia, and I apologize for mispronouncing that, Jalia Shannon, and Thalia Ellison, who both turn, attend different high schools than anyone else on the commission.
So I'd also make that case for then Iyamidi, who lives in District 1 and is here tonight.
Yeah, she was our first speaker. I, I agree with that, too. I think she's a, was, is a good candidate for, because she's, she represents District 1, but also overlaps into District 3 and Laguna High School, who we don't have anybody. Laguna Creek, right now, we don't have anybody.
Yeah.
So the five that are 17 that are current members, when will they turn out?
They will have, they will continue another year of service, and they will probably be stepping down next May is when they'll be stepping down from service. So we'll have another five vacancies projected, at least for May 2019.
Another one I'd like to consider is Kaylee Fan, because she, she came before us for, with a plastic bag. She said that here in her resume, too. And then she continuously applies, so in a way, she's, I mean, she's spoken here before, but, you know, do we want to give credence to her?
I, I was very impressed by her resume. I, I've kind of put all of the District 4, District 4 applicants.
I did, too.
To the back burner, simply because that's the most overrepresented currently.
Yeah, good, good point. Yep.
But I think once the, the folks that are current now turn out, then we won't have very many District 4. And so I think what's happening now is we're getting a lot of folks that are at the same age, and they all turn out at the same time. So if we stagger it, we'll be able to have less frequent vacancies as we do now.
Actually, that's a good point, right?
So I, I mean, Shay is definitely somebody that I felt he'd applied and.
Which one is that?
Shay.
Oh, Shay, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Never sleeps.
I had Shay starred. I also had Ayana Navarro starred.
Yeah.
Just because I'm familiar with her through the teen idol program.
Yeah, as did I. And her, actually, her father talked to, talked to me and said that they weren't going to be able to make it tonight, but was very interested in having Ayana on the, if at all possible, too.
Okay.
You know, if you're looking, if you're looking at the diversity also, as was mentioned, Adam Davis, District 1 now.
Yeah.
And, excuse me, District 3, but District 1 for where they live now.
Yeah.
And also Laguna Creek High School.
Right.
So Adam would be, would be someone I'd consider. And then. So I'll just throw out, so with our veterinary tie, I know that, so we got a doctor in the house, a veterinary, and his, his daughter, very articulate, and she's, this is her last opportunity. I know that we're trying to keep the diversity of ages, but this, this is her last shot. Some of the other kids are quite a bit younger, have three, at least three more shots.
Are you talking about Punnet?
Yes.
Yes, I thought she was, I had her as number one, so I.
I had her starred.
Yeah. I, I would recommend Punnet as well. And also, on a side note, with your dad being a veterinarian and your background, looking at your resume, helping with all the different animal-related items, you'd also have a, be a great volunteer for a new animal shelter when it opens up, too. If your dad will ever let you go.
Anything else?
How many do you have down there?
I have down five, and I'm prepared to push them forward.
That's six. Who are the five you have?
Yeah.
The five that I have and I'm prepared to push, push forward right now is Hung Yu Wang, Adam Davis, Iyamidi Davies, Punit Shahal, and Shay Sharma.
Works for me.
All right.
Good?
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you all for participating in this process. There'll be more openings. Please, for those younger students, please come back, because we're always looking for, for young people to participate in this process. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right? And at this point, want to adjourn the meeting at 8:15 PM.